Call the meeting to order. At this time, I would like to welcome Scout Troop 213 and ask that Parker Taves and Shannon Lottman come forward and lead us in the pledge, please.
And he's right behind you.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I've never seen anybody do that before.
Again, welcome to Troop 213. Thank you for joining us. Welcome to everyone else to the February 3, 2015 Post Falls City Council Meeting. Clerk will note that councilors are all present with the exception of Mr. Malloy, who called and so kindly stayed home because he's sick. So, Joe, get better. Appreciate the heads up. Also, there is a—there are two public hearings tonight. One is a continuation, and so everybody knows, we continued the public hearing, but any testimony tonight will be restricted to new information that will be brought forth by our attorney. There was some questions asked. Mr. Cafferty has done some research, so the only testimony that we will allow tonight is in response to the information that he brings forth. So, I want everybody to be aware of that. And anybody that does wish to speak, there's forms to fill out on the podium in the back. Turn them in to Shannon or clerk, and we will listen to you with the rules that I've just expressed. Ceremonies, announcements, appointments. We have a few announcements. President's Day is February 16, and City Hall and City Business Offices will be closed on that Monday in observance of the President's Day. For police emergencies, call 911. The Police Department will be open for walking emergencies. For Water Department emergencies, call 773-3517. The garbage pickup schedules will not be affected by the holiday. And also, Rick Steele, who was the city—facility's maintenance supervisor, retired this week after 12 years with the city. We appreciate everything Rick has done and wish him well in retirement. The city has begun an update to the transportation plan. There was an open house last Tuesday to give the public an opportunity to ask questions and give comments. Thank you to everyone who took the time to come out and participate. If you don't—didn't make it to the open house, you can still participate by taking surveys and giving comment. Your input will help guide how and where transportation funds are spent on roadway, bike, and pedestrian facilities. So, please visit the city's website, postfallsidaho.org, or Facebook page, and follow the links to the transportation plan, webpage, and surveys where you can give The Chamber of Commerce Community Recognition Banquet was last week. I want to congratulate Chief Scott Hoag for being recognized as Citizen of the Year. He had a tough act to follow with Ms. Wilhelm, so that was very nice. And congratulate Deborah Wonderlake for Volunteer of the Year, as well as Garden Plaza for the Business of the Year. It was also my honor to present the Mayor's Awards for Community Service to Windermere Realty and to Randy Oaks for their contributions to our community. Windermere Realty has raised over $794,000 for local charities since 1996, and Randy Oaks has been a tireless fundraiser and serves with the Senior Center, Food Bank, Chamber of Commerce, and many other organizations. Last week, a citizen called the Police Department to report an act of kindness by Officer Chris Thompson. The woman said Thompson gave her money for gas to get to work when he saw her struggling to pay for gas. I want to commend Officer Thompson for his kindness, and I'm proud to be mayor of a community where people care about each other. That's just another instance of the wonderful Police Department we have. Couple of community events you may want to know about. The Sweethearts Ball is Saturday, February 14 at Greyhound Parks and Event Center. Dance Nightway to Tuxedo Junction. Free hors d'oeuvres and no-host bar. Tickets are $18 per person, $35 per couple, and are available at Upscale Mail, Mountain West Bank, or Washington Trust Bank. Also, on Saturday, the 14th, Valentine's Day Dance and Dinner at the American Legion Post 143. Jazz and Swing Band, All That Jazz, will be providing the music. Only 60 tickets available, $35 per couple. For tickets, call 446-8495. And also, this one's going to take me just a minute, but we have to read this. A Post Falls police officer went out of her way to make sure an elderly woman was okay on Sunday. A 90-year-old had fallen inside her home, and police had no way to get to her until they saw a doggy door. Officer Emily Morris knew time was a key factor, and she had to make sure the woman did not have any serious injuries. Police got a call from a woman in Florida who was talking with her 90-year-old mother on the phone when she fell and could not get back to the phone. The daughter then called police, pretty worried that her mom might have hit her head. Officer Morris and her partner responded to the home to make sure everything was okay. When they knocked, there was no response. The two then went around back where they could see the woman through a window. They said she was laying on the floor and could not get up. Officer Morris knew she had to get inside the house to make sure the woman did not have a head injury. All the doors were locked, so she started looking for another way in. We know she had some dogs. My partner said, "Hey, there's a dog door here." So, I said, "All right, and that's how we're going to get in. Let's go." "So, I did what I needed to do, and right through it I went," said Officer Morris. Officer Morris made it through the doggy door without a problem. She just had to take off a few pieces of gear. They were then able to get to the woman and help her to her feet. The 90-year-old woman is doing just fine. Officer Morris followed up with the woman's daughter, who was grateful for what she did. So, again, another example of the excellent service provided by our Police Department. Captain McLean, please pass on our thanks to your staff and Officer Morris, and I'm just thankful it wasn't me trying to get through the doggy door, because I wouldn't—
(laughing) I'd never make it.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight.
And thank you for joining us. Obviously, you're not Shelley. Finance Director Jason Faulkner is pitch-hitting tonight, so thank you very much. Are there any declarations of conflict? There are none. Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is the minutes from January 20, 2015. Item B is the payables from January 13, 2015, to January 26, 2015. Item C is the arts policy, and Item D is the point—at Point Post Falls Phase 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 subdivision master development agreement.
Any questions, Jason? Not to entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion's second. Further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Larson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next item up is continuation of the December 16, 2014 Expo at Post Falls Zone Change. I'm going to reopen the public hearing. Once again, we're going to restrict comments, testimony only to the information that I am now going to ask City Attorney Mr. Cafferty to provide.
So, as the mayor and council will recall, back on December 16, some additional information—excuse me—came to light right before the commencement of the council meeting. Specifically, I was requested to review and opine on the effect of Ordinance 815, as well as the—let me see—the Expo Urban Renewal District documents. So, following the hearing, which was continued till tonight, I did have an opportunity to review Ordinance 815, Ordinance 990, Ordinance 1011, Resolution 9501, the City of Post Falls Tax Allocation Feasibility Study for Watson and Associates dated May 14, 2001, and the Expo Urban Renewal District—District Documents, also, I believe, from 2001. Those are public documents, but it would be my request that those documents be placed in the record on this matter as well.
Well, I wouldn't make such a motion.
Second.
Motion's second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hissong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
So, I reviewed the documents as noted earlier. While it's clear from the documents that, at the time this was created, this being the Expo Urban Renewal District as part of a—I always say this wrong, so let me quote myself here—as a competitively disadvantaged border community area to foster growth in the industrial, commercial types of uses. There is not a limit in any of those documents that this type of a zone change could not happen. It's clear that the intent—well, at least, it's my interpretation—that the intent is to foster the type of growth for this type of use, at least back in the late '90s and early 2000s. That being said, I don't think it controls this zone change request. I think there are facts within those documents that could be used in conjunction with the standards found in the city code under 18.16.010 to be weighed in—the factors from the Expo documents could be used in the basis for the zone change determination. But again, at the end of the day, they don't determine one way or the other whether or not this zone change can happen. There are factors to be considered, but I do not believe them to be dispositive of the matter before you. Are there any questions?
Questions to Mr. Cafferty? See none? Shannon, anyone wishing to speak? And again, bear with me. We will keep this as fair as we can, but if we're going back to information that's already been discussed and testimony are already received, we will probably cut it off and stick strictly to the information provided. You expect me to keep these straight? One more time, yeah. Which way am I going? Here we go. Thanks, Shannon. Wishing to speak neutral, Barry Rubin. Barry, do you want me to read the comments, or do you want to come forth?
(inaudible)
Thank you. Mr. Rubin states, "Need to hear from City Attorney regarding outstanding legal questions, which was the reason the final decision was delayed until today. Yet I saw no written"—I'm sorry.
Opinion?
Opinion, thank you, thank you, in the full packet. "Difficulty to be prepared to speak either for or against without the legal issues being addressed beforehand."
That essentially is why I didn't put yes in favor, no in favor. I could have missed it, of course, but in the full packet agenda for today's meeting, I did not see a written opinion from the City Attorney laying down the a's or nays from a legal standpoint. So, I find it very difficult, especially if debate is going to be limited, or public comment is going to be limited, to address those issues. If this is the first time we're hearing these comments verbally, I do believe that there should have been a written opinion placed into the record or the full packet agenda, so the public, as well as council, could have examined the opinion prior to tonight's meeting, and we're all trying to figure out exactly what was said. If I missed it, if there was a written memorandum, my apologies. If there wasn't, I think there should have been, especially with the limit on the speaking engagements we have here today. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that was because it was not public. It was attorney-client privilege at that point. Is that correct?
That is correct. I—
And it needed to be a public place for us to—
I can't release that. This—it was an opinion drafted for the council, that it's—
Thank you. Wishing to speak in opposition, Fred Ebel.
He already spoke last night.
Frankly, I was taken a little bit—by the way, my name is Fred Ebel. I live at 1206 South Riverside Harbor Drive in Post Falls. I was taken a little bit by surprise tonight, knowing that we would only be able to talk concerning the issue, which frankly, I haven't seen anything written on it, so I'm at a loss for that. But for the little bit that I did catch, I have a copy of the Expo Urban Renewal Plan in front of me, and in the interdiction, it clearly states that we are disadvantaged for attracting business and commerce. And this urban renewal district provides financing through the use of increment financing for public improvements, which would enhance the area and thereby bring more commercial and business growth into the area and community. Now, I have no—no problem with housing subdivisions. If they're in the right place, doesn't make any difference. But this expo area was designed to encourage business, commercial, and industrial business. You folks with your vote tonight will actually take out—I'm not sure of the exact acres, about 100-plus acres—from commercial and business options in the city of Post Falls. Including that, placing businesses and residential subdivisions next to each other poses a problem. All of us remember the asphalt batch plant in Cooney County, and it's true of almost any business, particularly if you put in a sawmill, if you put in a trucking facility, warehouse, a lot of noise, a lot of lights. And for that reason, I wonder if the planners originally—and of course, the developers signed off on this—we're talking about business and industrial use of that area. I wouldn't have a problem with residential changes if there was a dearth of residential opportunities in this city. There is not. We have an abundance. Given the timeframe and the fact that I haven't seen the official decision from the City Attorney, I'll end my comments here. But your vote will depend whether we progress with commercial and industrial opportunities in Post Falls or not. And by the way, I'm all for them. Thank you.
Wishing to speak in opposition, Len Crosby.
We don't have the files on this. I was going to go through what was on the long agenda real quick.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I will restrict my comments exclusively to the Urban Renewal District. This district was created in 2001 to provide improvements that would support job creation and economic development. Over the last 13 years, the many changes in the original development plan, we have seen little in the way of economic development or job creation. The district expires in 2021, six years from now, but it can collect tax revenue for up to a year after maturity. The tax increment received by the Urban Renewal Agency for the Expo Urban Renewal District over the 12-month period commencing August 1, 2013, and ending August 2014—the last possible year I could have gathered this data—is $265,528.32. The amount of property tax dollars or a greater amount is anticipated to be collected by the Urban Renewal Agency for the next seven years. The amount the agency owes Mr. Watson, the developer of this district, for reimbursement of public improvements dedicated or created for the public is $3,733.65. My question is, why not pay this off, close the district, return the annual quarter of a million dollars in tax increment to the city and other taxing debt risk, and let Mr. Watson do whatever he and this council agree is reasonable for that land, but not as urban renewal? The proponent is requesting a zone change, which would create single-family homes and high-density apartments. Urban renewal should not be used to funnel tax dollars to residential development or to the construction of access streets or public infrastructure, which supports such development. This has been a guiding principle of the urban renewal—of the use of urban renewal in the city since this agency was created. This proposed zoning change is inconsistent with the intent of the city council when it approved the urban renewal plan for the Expo District, and inconsistent with the manner in which our city has utilized the urban renewal program. Urban renewal should focus on economic development and job creation and not on residential development, and I respectfully ask that you reject—the proposed zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. For the scouts in the audience, when these—have these public hearings, we allow folks three minutes to talk, so that's why you'll see them looking at a timer up here. Also wishing to speak in opposition, Mr. Bob Flowers.
Bob Flowers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I, like the other folks here, were kind of caught in surprise about the limitations of our testimony tonight. Because of the lack of time, because nobody got a chance to hear your city attorney's opinion, I believe that this meeting should have been put off to another—for another time—to give the folks a chance to prepare ahead of time after the city attorney's opinion was known. This area—this expo area was put there to bring in industry and jobs and money into this community. It was not put there to build a bunch of houses, especially apartment houses. It was there to provide jobs for the people of Post Falls that are here now and in the future. And by—how much land are we going to have left if we keep turning 100 acres here, 100 acres there? How much are we going to have left if we do, by some lucky chance, get a company that wants to come in and do a large plant or a large—anything? We won't. We won't have the land there. It was designed, through urban renewal, to be that land. And just because they haven't been able to attract anybody in there since this was put together is not the citizens of Post Falls' problem, and we shouldn't just let them—allow them to change it for no reason. I'm sorry. I had some other things to say, but we have our limits, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. In favor but not wishing to speak, Mr. Paul Belec, who states, "I am for this project." In favor not wishing to speak, Mr. Mark Simon. In favor not wishing to speak, Melissa Elder. In favor not wishing to speak, John J. Ennis. In favor not wishing to speak, Robert Elder. In favor not wishing to speak, Brenda Mattern. In favor not wishing to speak, JT Jacobson. In favor not wishing to speak, Brett Nearing. In favor not wishing to speak, Ann Butler. I'm going to assume this next gentleman is in favor, not wishing to speak, Jim Watson. If approved tonight, more than—I'm having a hard time here—more than 20 will be extended in the next three years. Jaclyn Expo Boulevard will be extended to Beck Road. So, I'm sorry, Jim, I didn't read it all, but in favor, not wishing to speak. In favor not wishing to speak, John—is it Malay?
Yeah.
Thank you. In favor not wishing to speak, Randy Cox. In favor not wishing to speak, Melissa Valdivinos. Thank you. My eyes are old. In favor not wishing to speak—another Valdivinos. Thank you. Sorry about that. In favor not wishing to speak, Brenda Hillary? In favor not wishing to speak, Blair Walton. In favor—now, here's one in favor not wishing to speak, James Watson. So, do we have two Jim Watsons here? Okay. Thank In favor not wishing to speak, Jerry Smith. In favor not wishing to speak, Drew Dipman. In favor not wishing to speak, Justin Nagel. In favor not wishing to speak, Dan Mattern. In favor not wishing to speak, Rob Elder. In favor not wishing to speak, Edward Vildacius?
Vindacious.
Vindacious. Butchering a lot of names. I apologize. This area is in need of more rooftops. This will help with more commercial buildings, which will bring needed jobs to area. In favor not wishing to speak, Charles Ellyard. We need more west-side growth. In favor not wishing to speak, Margaret Ellyard. We need to definitely have folks settle in the area, so the density shall bring about more business prospects. It's time. The area is long overdue. And finally, wishing to speak in favor, Chuck Lempisis.
Mr. Mayor, I will be closing for the proponent. Will I be limited to three minutes under the rules?
You get 15 for the—since you're speaking for the applicant, you get 15 minutes.
Thank you very much. I don't plan to use that. I was just—I thought I remembered the rules. I couldn't, though. My name is Chuck Lempisis. I live at 6,700 Maplewood Avenue and maintain offices at 201 West 7th Avenue, Post Falls, and at 1950 Bell Reeve Lane, Court Lane. I'm a lawyer. I'm not appearing on behalf of Mr. Watson, other than as a volunteer and to close for the proponent. I do so because I think I may add to your databank and to your recollection certain facts that will be helpful to you in making this important decision, okay? I would also tell you that I am the first one that should be opposed to this if it were placing me at a competitive disadvantage, or if I felt it was an applicable application of the Urban Renewal Act, with which I am rather familiar and will tell you about. Because I have a subdivision with 500 lots, or now it's down to about 400, sitting at Crown Plaza, at Spokane and Prairie, which would be in direct competition. But I don't find urban renewal to—as it's applied—to give any advantage to Mr. Watson, nor do I or any of the other developers situated here find that to be an unreasonable competitive advantage. When all is said and done, no matter what you want to think about this, I don't think you can, at any time, suggest that I'm going to tell you anything that I don't believe is in the best interest of this community, okay? I've invested my life in Post Falls. I wrote the— I wrote the Competitive Disadvantaged Border Community Act, guilty as charged, okay? I named the Competitively Disadvantaged Border Community Act. It was in a bar, late at night in Boise, and it was for good purposes. The Urban Renewal Act was amended solely and expressly for one legislative purpose. I know, because I was there. I know, because I presented it to the relevant committees, and I know because the votes were passed, it were done for this purpose. And it was to create jobs in areas along our border, not only here but in other areas of the state, where the other state had an advantage over ours in attracting business and industry. It's as simple as that, okay? As simple as that. That's what it was for, that is what it is for. You'll never convince me or anybody else that was there. That's not what it's for. I also want you to know, I wholeheartedly agree with my friends Bob and Lynn, that you don't use urban renewal or TIF to go put up housing projects. Understand that. Couldn't agree more, okay? But I want you to look at the history of this Urban Renewal Act and the Watson Development intertwined. Mr. Hisong sat on the council when this came about. He knows as much as I do about this. And you'll understand why we are, or why Mr. Watson is where he is today. Buys property in 1992, pays a healthy dollar for that. After some struggle, annexes it to the city of Post Falls and pays, I believe, about a million two in annexation fees. I, I could be off, but I'm close. Then the first thing that happens is he spends about $2 million hiring a full-time staff and a slew of consultants to go out, along the charge of meeting the dictates of the Competitively Disadvantaged Border Community Act and just our goals all along, to create jobs and industry, on trying to get the indoor regional mall. That is before that regional mall was in the Spokane Valley. There was none. And Jim spent about two and a half years and about two and a half million dollars cash trying to get that mall. Lost it. Came in number two, okay? We're the Avis of recruitment here, if you remember that commercial world. Then what came about next is there was a company called Micron Corporation, who said, "We need another plant." Well, Micron was a big deal, it still is a big deal, but remember they were building ships that were just flying everywhere. This was the prize in the, in the western United States if you could get Micron. The only way that we could compete, though, was to have some business development edge that would compete with Washington, Utah, Nevada. I can tell you, Nevada leads the lead. Ask Tom Powers where he's opening his new company in Nevada, okay? Business goes there because they have incentives, business incentives. That's when the competitively disadvantaged border community came about, because all Idaho had at the time was the industrial development revenue bond, and Frank Henderson had gotten that. That's all that existed. It wouldn't do us any good. This gave us an edge, and as it would have it, this was a big controversy in town when Micron was being recruited. And the controversy is, why should we use this tax increment financing, Bill Melvin will remember this, to recruit Micron at taxpayers' expense? Well, it's for jobs, because we need industry in this community. I can remember when there's Farvers and Rebus, and that was it. So what happened, we even had a vote in the city, a vote in the city, and the vote was 70% against not having a vote on it, because the voters didn't even want to vote. They wanted the business. They wanted urban real to recruit businesses. That's the history of this. Jim Watson's paid a couple of million dollars probably in property taxes since, and I want to tell you, nobody could have worked harder to recruit business and industry. John Gwell was full-time there for three years. He's one of the most successful brokers in the country. Steve Ridenhour tried to sell that stuff. Paul Bealik's tried to sell everything he could out there, and it's here tonight. You have Cabellas and Walmart, okay? Two of the nation's leading retailers and draws, and nobody wants to build around them? Because of one simple component: rooftops. I appreciate that the urban renewal plan submitted by Expo says that it is to enhance the assembly of commercial business and industrial growth. The operative word is "enhance," which is consistent with the statute, "enhance," to bring about, to help. And the missing component that is there, and the only missing component, is rooftops and residential. I drove here tonight, probably for the first time in about a month, because I've been out of town, down Spokane Avenue. It's a freeway. Holy God. I mean, I remember when you drove down there and you waved at everybody coming along that street, and you remember it too, okay? You grew up here. Today, it is nothing but cars going back and forth, and we have successful businesses from one end of Seltice to the other end of Seltice. We have four, four auto part dealers. Why do, why do you think that is? Let's put on our thinking caps. Because there's residences here. Residences equal business. People only go close to home. How many of you drive out to Walmart there if you live next to Walmart here? Nobody. Here's my point. We need the rooftops there to enhance the business development. It is not for the sake of building residences. Jim Watson would be a moron, okay? If he just wanted to turn that property into residential development, there's a developer in this room that will disagree with me that that is the worst use of the property if you want to make money. The money isn't getting businesses and big boxes and commercial development, but you have to sacrifice that with the rooftops to get it. Fred Meyer's told us that, Albertson's has told us that, Walmart's told us that, everybody's told us that, and you don't have to have an MBA from Wharton to figure that out. That's all this is about. It isn't about getting an advantage. Here's the bottom line. Cootney County has lost over 3,000 jobs in the last two years. Look at the data. Post Falls alone, I think it's Post Falls, has lost 800 jobs since 2010. Lost, net loss of jobs. Expo, by the way, has created, how many is it, Gary? 80? 80 jobs, just with the 34 little businesses that are there. You can ask Tom Lean, he came up with those figures at our request. They're doing a new analysis for the city. Jim's doing everything he can to do that. The rooftops are a vital component of handing, of getting business and industry. Yeah, they're going to build some houses to do that, but here is your choice, and I really fear we're going to make the wrong decision on this for the wrong reason, just for the wrong reason. If you make the negative decision for the right reason, I'm good with that, but it's not about residential development. Here's the decision. This plan ends in 2021, that's seven years. Do you know how fast that's going to go by? You know, when you're my age, things go by even faster, they just do. Well, I didn't mean that the way it sounded, but, but here's the reality. In seven years, that plan ends. Jaclyn Road won't be through, Expo won't be through, because there won't be any business providing any base to get it through. And you look at the economics of your plan, you're going to be about a million dollars upside down, unless we get something going. This isn't a matter of want, it's a matter of need. That's all this is about. You can take a picture today of what's out there. Take an aerial today, and I hope I'm alive to come back and say, "I told you so," you're going to have exactly what you got there now with a few more tilt-up steel buildings. Or we can put some residences in, and I will bet you in seven years, there's something like a Fred Meyer, an Albertson store, two auto parts store, a Jack-in-the-Box. They aren't there there for one reason. There's a reason. Subway closed, Subway closed, Burger King closed. What's the missing ingredient? Rooftops. This isn't about Jim Watson making money. It isn't about residences. It's about creating jobs in this community, and no man I know of has spent more time and money in Post Falls, Idaho since 1992. 22 years trying to make this work. All he's asking is to do the right thing, and that's what I'd like to ask you to do tonight. I stand for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lempisis.
I'm wondering...
Excuse me, sir. We, we have rebut, and that's it. We can't go back for additional testimony.
Rules and rules.
Close of public hearing. Counsel, it's in your hands. Who'd like to start?
Okay. Chuck, always appreciate you being here. It's a pleasure, and we don't always agree, but that's fine. I'd like to point out that Walmart on Mullen Road, there were no rooftops when they built, after they built, there were rooftops. I went cruising over the last two weeks to shopping centers and industrial areas, Spokane as well as North Idaho. There's not one house in the Valley Mall. There's 100 and some businesses, very successful, but no houses. Just north of that's a huge industrial area, Spokane Industrial Park, there's not a house in it. Burger King went broke after Woodbridge was put in. Woodbridge was built because we needed rooftops, and that was going to make Expo skyrocket. This development is much smaller than Woodbridge, and I don't know the size, you can probably tell me the difference in the number of homes, but how adding 50% of more Woodbridge approximately is going to make it rocket, I can't buy into it. The, far as the urban renewal on it, I don't care one way or the other. I disagree vehemently with money being put into residential from the taxpayers, getting to pay for the police to come out and so on and so forth. Disagree with it neither here nor there. The fact is, I don't believe that it's residential. Residential didn't save Expo when you put in Woodbridge, which was the reason it was put in, that's how it was sold. You're right, Chuck, I was on things back then and remember the conversations very well. And for that reason, I am, I am opposed to it. The best in use for that property is that, adding a few houses. Ed Hatter is the best fast food man that ever set foot in North Idaho, and even with Woodbridge, he couldn't keep his Burger King alive, and that speaks volumes. I had a realtor friend explain to me one time what rooftops really were, when I pointed out that the Valley Mall has no rooftops. They don't really have them any very close. They have Kaiser to the north, and they have some other park area and so on around them. He said, "You don't get it, Skip, the rooftops are called freeway off-ramps." There's one on either end of the Valley Mall. There's one on either end of Expo. People do drive when there's attraction to go, whether it's to work they go, whether it's to shop they go. So I am opposed to the project out there.
Thanks, Skip. Benin.
I'd just like to add a little bit to that. I need some clarification here. You guys are always telling us, every time you come before us, that we've got to have those rooftops, and that will bring in commercial, that will bring in industrial. Just like Skip said, what has it brought in? I don't believe it had anything to do with Walmart. That was because of the Star legislation. Walmart wasn't, had anything to do with Woodbridge. So tell me one positive subdivision where it's actually brought in. Sure, it adds to it. Anytime you have any rooftops or anything, you're going to add to it, but tell me one that is going to enhance further any commercial or industrial, one subdivision, I want to know.
Is that a question to me, Mrs.?
That's a question.
Uh, excuse me. No, this is deliberation point.
Well, it's not a question, it's just a comment. Can he comment on it?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
Unless you're going to reopen the hearing.
I can reopen the public hearing.
You can't comment on it, Chuck. Sorry.
Linda.
I'm, I'm going to be disagreeing with my friends here. What I believe is that the long-term benefits outweigh the short-term maybe disadvantages. Six or seven years of urban renewal increment on these houses that could build these mains, these main roads, and not the interior roads, but the exterior roads that will bring, I believe, the commercial growth out there. I'm, again, not in favor of urban renewal and residential, but in this case, I believe that, that it can help that plight out there, and so I'm going to agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm going to be in favor.
Thank you.
I want to clarify quickly, because it came up with some of the commenters, about why that legal opinion was not published, because one of the things that we don't do is conduct business outside of the public view. And so for all of us to agree, to make that, to waive privilege, our attorney privilege, we needed to do it here at this meeting. So I just wanted to clarify that, that what we were doing was not consorting behind the scenes, we were doing exactly the opposite, and making sure that that happened here at a meeting. I also want to thank, I want to thank Chuck for reminding me that we used to know everyone in town, and we don't anymore, and I remember all of those scenarios that you talked about from the, from the 90s and, and before. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Watson and every person who has invested in our community. And I would also, I would say, yeah, there's probably not too many that would have had the tenacity that, that Mr. Watson has had out there, and I think that every one of us would love to see that be a success. I'm inclined, as is Counselor Wilhelm, I'd like to see progress, and I think that this is the way, the way that we need to do it. I'm not, in a perfect world, I would like to have that, I'd like to see that urban renewal district close early, and if it could be separated, but we don't have the purview to do that, we can't make that decision at this body. I'd like to see that separated from, eliminated from the urban renewal district, what we may or may not decide tonight, but I would vote in favor, I will be voting in favor of the zone.
Takes a long time to build a city. I don't want to give up on this. We sat down so many years ago and laid out a plan and said, "We want manufacturing, industrial, commercial in that area." And I'm, you know, I'm sorry that Mr. Watson's put in a lot of money, but I want to stick with the plan. I still think that area is best served for industrial, commercial, not rooftops. I have yet to see one piece of evidence that says rooftops brings commercial. If it brings Subway or Burger King, not what I'm looking for out there. I say we stick with the plan, and I would move that we decline the request to change the zone at the Expo.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm.
No.
Hen, Hisong.
Thank you.
No, no, no.
Pardon me.
He voted for a decline.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I support it, yes.
Oh, I see. Henderson.
Yes.
Both.
Yes.
Thorson.
Nay.
Thank you. Motion to deny the zone, the zone change passes. Thank you all for your testimony and input. Next item up is the updated fees for fiscal year 2015. Who's presenting that?
I'll present that as well.
Go ahead, Jason.
Do you start my car afterwards for me? I don't think I want to try starting it, it might blow up.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I believe it was back in December, we had a workshop, and we talked about cemetery fees, and at that point, it was decided that we wanted to go forward and amend the fees for the cemetery as soon as possible, and not wait until the October, when we usually do for the budget cycle. We wanted to do it midstream. And the reason we wanted to do this was because we wanted to, and it was mentioned, have the cemetery become a little less reliant on the general fund. And so we had, there was a plan to do that over this year, and also at October 1st, the fees will bump up again, but I'll present at that time as well, when we do that increase. And I had sent out a memo to...
Can I, can I interrupt, Jason?
Yes.
For a moment, Mr. Mayor. The clerk and I were discussing...
Look, you're in it.
Yes.
Yes.
I apologize. I will now somewhat tardily open the public hearing.
Get two extra minutes, huh?
Tardily. Check and see if that's a word, please. Spell check that.
Sorry.
My apology. Thank you very much, Mr. Caferty and Ms. Howard. I appreciate that.
Just excited to get started, I guess. So this is just a recap of the fees that we wanted to increase during this budget season. Whether it's the burial lots, roadside, middle, and inner. Burial lots will go up $300. Cremation burial lot will go up $275. And the niches also will take a $300 increase as well. There's also been some discussion on increasing the fees just slightly for opening. Weekdays will be, if it's during the week, they'll be $50. Weekends, $50. Holiday weekend, to try to deter from paying the overtime, so the increase will be over $200. And also, we wanted to add a winter surcharge of $50.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes.
For clarification, the winter surcharge was for propane, et cetera, necessary to heat the ground, is my understanding.
Right. Thaw on the ground, yes.
And with the changes that you showed up, the first slide, I believe, I think it was Mr. Hisong had asked a question. If the vaults, the...
Niches?
Niches, yes. If they were something we were trying to emphasize, they were going to go up on a percentage basis, I guess, less than burial lots?
Yeah.
Do these numbers reflect that?
Dave will discuss it. We had, we had mentioned it to staff, but he will take it from here.
Okay. No, they do not. Shelley and I sat down, and she had me go look at some of the neighboring cities and where that would put, because one of the other issues in hand was having people wanting to come here because it was cheaper. Right now, even with this increase, because we'd already had a, a deduct, or a lower price for niches compared to a lot, if we reduce it more, we're still below what Cord Lane's charging. They're at 1,500. Lewson's at 1034. Spokane's at, starting at 3,800 and going up. Also, we went and looked at the top tier, which is, for a niche, would be at 1,000...
350, 1350.
Fifty. Yeah.
1,050.
At 1,050. In the veteran section, we only have 28 of those spaces left. In the general use, we only have nine. 90% of what we have available is in that middle and lower tier, so you're looking at 1,00950. So the market's already reduced it at that point. So it was staff's recommendation that we keep it so that we can generate the revenue back in for the expansion.
Okay. Skip's right with you. I know that was a question you had asked.
It was.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
And this also goes as well with the opening of the niches. During the weekday, weekends, $50. And to try to discourage a holiday event, holiday weekend, it'd be an increase of 200.
Are you singing?
Let me just open the door. Go ahead.
And the final portion from the cemetery is, there's just a few miscellaneous items wanted to adjust the prices as well, whether it's a headstone location, setting military marker, setting regular markers. And also, we wanted to talk about, we wanted to put in here that instead of having a fixed cost for, for liners and engraving, we wanted to, whatever the cost is, add a 2.5% times the cost. And also, we wanted to add a, increase the fee for a memorial tree. And that is the portion that pertains to cemetery. The other part of the fee increase that we wanted to also, while we're doing a public hearing for it, the fees are to increase what we currently charge for our Parks Department for Recreation. We wanted to increase the, the use of the ball fields, use and reservations for $5. Prep of, prep of the baseball field, increase it by 10. Prep of the soccer and football field by 10. And also, increase the gym rental from $15 to $20 an hour. And I had put the question out to other department heads of any fees that they had wanted to add or increase. And one fee that the police department was wanting to add was an adoption fee. The chief felt that having an adoption fee was more like a, when you go and adopt a pet, that there was actually some financial responsibility that continues with the pet. Not only did you adopt the pet, but then there's also going to be, keep you in mind, there's going to be other costs associated with it. City currently doesn't charge an adoption fee, but the chief wanted to start with $40. And so I've put that in the fee resolution as well.
This is my understanding. We're going to renew that or review that, excuse me, in 12 months to make sure that this $40 hasn't affected our adoption rate.
Yes, that was one thing he wanted to start with, was to see if the $40 either discouraged people from adopting pets. So he wanted to look at that, and he has the animal control staff letting him know of any sharp decline in adoption of pets. That's a very good point.
Follow-up on that, Skip. I think you said within 12 months, we'd review it.
Right.
But if it has a significant impact prior to, we'll bring it back?
Yeah. During the, when we start the new budget cycle in October, which is just right around the corner, we'll start with adoption fees. Hey, we start this early. Okay.
Jason, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Are we going to keep track of the people that pay the 40 bucks so that if after three or four months, we get rid of it, we'll pay them back? Because that would seem odd that we go from zero, 40, back to zero, and the people in between.
There's a lot of places that do charge an adoption fee, such as if you go into Spokane, whether you adopt an animal through scraps, or you, you do pay a larger fee than the $40. And so, but the chief wanted to start with this, to see if, to let them know that whoever adopts a pet, there's an, there's a financial obligation to it to start with. And then he wanted to also, when we do charge the $40, to monitor if the adoption has decreased. There was no mention of refunding the money back.
Okay.
And also, that would help absorb some of the costs that they currently pay with, food, supplies that they have.
I'm not in disagreement of the 40 bucks. I'm, I'm more like thinking that if you're that one guy that goes in and says, "Hey, I'll adopt this dog, it's $40."
Sure.
And then, but then we have a city council meeting that following Tuesday and get rid of the fee. That poor guy just paid 40 bucks.
That's something that...
The next guy doesn't have to pay.
But I think that's something we could discuss administratively, if that is, if there is a case like that, yeah.
I bet he wouldn't give his animal back, though.
I was just going to say.
Probably not.
So that $40 is just a fee?
Yes.
It doesn't include licensing?
No.
Or anything like that?
No.
I wonder why not?
That's something we could talk about, definitely. And I think the, maybe the chief had that in mind, but we could definitely talk, talk to him about that when he returns.
Dog has a home, and a dog has a license. One-stop shopping. Get right on that, Captain.
That's all the fees that I had?
Real quick question. I had an email the day of a gentleman who's a volunteer in baseball, and I see the field going up 10 bucks. Is that only for the work that the city does, or if it's a completely volunteer organization, they made, do any of them maintain fields, prep fields?
The fee, actually, just so you understand, we raised it, or wanted to, and we missed the last budgetary deadline. That doesn't cover our complete cost of that. So we're trying to go back into recouping. The charge is for the use of the city fields. The prep in there is an additional cost of 35, if they want it ready for a tournament or a game.
But if they prep it themselves, they wouldn't have to pay that fee?
If they prep it correctly. And part of the thing, kind of laugh at that, but, you know, as I say, it sounds kind of funny, but that's one of the reasons we got into starting to maintain the fields is because we had a lot of groups doing it. Some people do very well, some don't, and we spent a ton of money to fix the things. The groups do have an option to put in labor and materials if it fits within the city's needs to offset that. We've always had that, and...
For in-kind?
For, it's, it's an in-kind.
Well, I will be visiting with him probably in the next week or so, so I'll bring his, his thoughts and input back to him. We'll visit.
And just so you know, Brian Myers, our park manager, has been and is meeting with the groups, just like last year, Mitzi had a meeting with all the users. So they're made aware of it, their presidents, their schedulers.
Okay. Good.
There is options.
That was the staff report, correct? Introduction and staff report?
Your own staff, yes.
Thank you. Shannon, is there anybody wishing to testify?
There's no one.
And we're not going to let you rebut. I will close the public hearing. Counsel, it's in your hands.
I think there are fees that need to be adjusted from time to time, and I think now's the time to do it. Is that a motion? Bless anyone. Let everybody else speak.
We can still talk. You bet.
Yeah, we can still talk. I, I have to say that, you know, the cost of doing business goes up. The fees that I received the most comment about was raising cemetery fees. And there's not much you can do about that one. We need to do that expansion and make it a little self-sufficient. But, yeah, I thought that was interesting, that the cemetery fees was the biggest. But I'm, I'm in favor as they are presented.
Anybody else?
I have, for 20-some years, wanted to see the cemetery be self-supporting and break-even. It's not, obviously not used by everybody, fortunately, at this point. So I think it should be a fee-based situation, which this brings us closer. What'd you say, Dave? Within 25% of being self-sufficient when these are in place, when these new fees are in place?
I, it'll bring us a little closer, probably 20%. And if we follow through with the next proposal, that will bring us in line to being a break-even.
And even when we get to self-sufficiency with our next raise, a year or whenever it is going to be down the road, we're still way cheaper than the market, given everybody likes to compare our wages to Spokane and everything else. We can compare this to Spokane and say, "Hey, we're a bargain compared to them," even at that point.
Without a doubt.
You're done.
And we will continue, as I mentioned in the workshop, look at other ways we can improve our services and our offerings.
Good. Linda Bediyan, any comment? Linda?
I would make a motion to accept the updated fees for fiscal year 2015.
Second.
Second.
And we have an ordinance coming. Can we do this at the end with the ordinance?
I believe you have a resolution, actually.
Yeah, there's a resolution later on in the agenda.
Resolution, okay. So we'll, we'll sit tight, and then we'll have you do it at the resolution time.
Okay.
It was a public hearing.
Yeah.
It was a public hearing. So we do have to vote, right?
You need a motion after public hearing, if there's a resolution at the end?
Why is my computer shutting down?
I'll, I'll tell you what. Just, just to make sure, Linda made a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Hisong.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. I think, I think we can do that just with the resolution, but now we're sure. Thank you, Linda. Next item is unfinished business. We have none. Next item is citizen issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to testify on city-related issues that are not on the agenda. Thank you. Seeing none. New business, we have none. Ordinances and resolution. Updated, updated fees for fiscal year 2015.
Move to approve the resolution, updated fees for fiscal 2015.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. I'm going to wager this one will pass. Clerk, please take the roll.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Hisong.
Aye.
Henderson.
Excuse me, aye.
Wolf.
Got somebody in my throat.
Thorson.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Administrator staff reports, do we have any tonight?
I have none tonight, sir.
Thank you. Mayor comments?